Good evening and welcome. I will call the Yakima City Council Study Session of October 14th, 2025 to order. And we're going to have roll call in just a second here.
We started a little fast.
Where's Brandy?
Brandy went to get signed in slips in case anybody in our audience wants to give public comment this evening. Mr. Beeler, are you listening? Would you like to make a public comment?
He's on vacation.
Yes.
We need Jeopardy music.
So why did you start the meeting?
Because my house is so funny. That's okay. That's okay. We appreciate it, Brandy. Yeah. No worries. I don't see anybody lining up anyways. I think we're okay. So we're into roll call. President.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Herrera.
Here.
Roy.
Bert.
Here.
Ralph.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Next is public comment. And tonight we will allow 15 minutes for public comment. If anybody wishes to make a comment, please make sure you fill out. Oh, you don't have slips. If you wish to make a public comment right now, please raise your hand and we'll give you instructions. I don't see any hands, so we will not have public comment from the audience this evening. Ms. Lozano, is there anyone online who'd like to make public comment this evening? Ms. Lozano, are you on? Okay, I'm assuming we have nobody online either. Great. Well, we're right on here.
This is a fun time.
We have a study session time. We have two items. The first is item 3A, which as a review of the 2026 preliminary mid-biennial budget, and Craig Warner, Director of Finance, will present to council.
Hi. No, no, Randy's off.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lozano. We're definitely public comment. We're going to move on.
Good evening, council. I'd like to go ahead and get started with the presentation of the 2026 proposed mid-biennial budget modifications for the city of Yakima. So just to talk about it a little bit, the city has already adopted a biennial budget for '25 and '26. So these are the modifications for the 2026 budget. And we knew these were going to probably be more than you would normally see in a two-year budget. Because when this was adopted, I think there were some very big challenges about, you know, where we are with revenues and expenditures. So ultimately, that's what we've kind of put together in terms of the presentation for tonight. Okay? So to start out, we're required by RCW 3534120 to have a balanced budget, which is basically the ability to basically say you take your revenues and expenditures, and any fund balance for each fund has to be in balance. And that is basically what we have presented. And as I mentioned, we've already adopted the 2026 biennial, 2526 budget, biennial budget. We've also put a document out online that's already out on the city's website. It's been out there since September 30th. So if anybody wants to see more detail than just the slides, it's available for people. Okay? So again, our financial goals here is to achieve a balanced budget in every fund, to make sure that we prioritize service levels as much as we possibly can in all of the funds and the things that the general fund covers and the other non-general fund. In our general fund, that we keep a 12% reserve, minimum reserve level. And then also to meet the city of Yakima's strategic priorities as set by the council, which is a safe and healthy Yakima, a resilient Yakima, a thriving Yakima, and an engaged Yakima. So some of the challenges that we've had are, right now, as we've gone through 2025, we had to project a two-year budget, '25, '26. We've seen in 2025, our sales tax revenue is starting to decline. And right now, that's probably going to be around about a $2.2 million reduction for 2025, which meant also then we were going to have a reduction in 2026 because we usually project a growth from one year to the next. We've also had to look at the 2026 budget, which had, when it was adopted, it had an $8.1 million deficit. And I know council's been told that that was a $9 million deficit, and it is overall because that's what we were projecting, that the budget was actually adopted at 8.1, but we knew that sales tax had already started to show some faulting and probably wasn't going to meet that number. Yes, sir.
So you're saying that if we're 2.2 million short for '25, then in '26, we'll have to take out, and if we project the same thing going forward, then we've got to make up $4 million additional, or just two?
Well, let me go through my presentation because ultimately, what we, that's, so there's three major revenue streams into our general fund, and that's what we're really going to talk mostly about tonight. Because all of the other funds that come in that are outside the general fund, the revenue really usually comes in for those purposes and has to be spent for that. So ultimately, if you cut that, if that money didn't come in, those projects or programs go away. So I think, you know, and I'll give you an example, the roundabouts, right? You hear a lot about the roundabouts. Those monies that pay for the roundabouts are usually state or federal grants. Okay? If we didn't get that money, we wouldn't do the roundabouts. If we get it, we can't spend that money on police and fire. It's got to be spent on roundabouts, or we have to give it back. So ultimately, that's what all those other funds are. They're very specific for what they have and what they're spent, what their, the money comes in for. The general fund's different, though. You basically get your property tax, your sales tax, your utility tax. Those three generate about 82 or 83% of your revenues in the general fund. And those are then set by council, by budget, where that money is going to go and where it gets allocated to. Okay? So ultimately, the, I guess that was the long answer. The short answer is, we've seen sales tax down, but we are seeing utility taxes up, which is filling some of that hole. Okay? Structural changes for discussing the budget consistently. And this is one of the things that I have brought to the table here. Because what I've seen is, is we have not been consistent in terms of how we report to the council. It's, the property tax comes in, we put some of it directly into parks, we put some of it directly into streets. We put some of it in the general fund. In my mind, it's general revenue. It should go in the general fund, and then we should move it to where we, the council directs us to go. So if it's parks, if it's streets, we then have an accounting of all the property tax in one place and where it's moved to. Okay? The other challenge that we had was my position. I know then, talking to my staff, there's been probably seven people in the last seven years that have held my position. And I think that's been extremely difficult for staff to feel confident that we're moving in the right direction and we're going to be consistent. So hopefully, we have some stability here, and hopefully that will help us move forward and allow council to also see things the same way over and over again, so you get confidence in the numbers that you see.
So does that mean you're staying more than a year?
He's not going anywhere.
I don't think I have a contract.
We're signing one.
And then, so with that, we've made some structural changes. We've created some new funds. Last year, there was an aquatics facilities fund that was established with the budget. The opioid lawsuit, we created a fund, so those opioid funds go directly into that fund. This year, we've also just recently adopted a lodging tax fund. So all the lodging tax money, again, goes in one place. We know how much we get, and then we know exactly where we portion it out. And then affordable housing, sales tax. This is that funding that council acted on to be able to receive. It's not a new tax. It's just a credit against the state's portion of the sales tax. We started collecting it in 2020, and the money was all going into the general fund. And the challenge is, is if that's in there, and it's part of your 12% reserve, and then all of a sudden you spend that money, now all of a sudden, you're not at your 12% reserve. So it was really important to get it out of the general fund, make sure it's one of those dedicated funds that you spend it the way it needs to be spent, because it's really not general. Okay? We also created a police relief and pension fund. We had one for fire already, so we felt that this was another step that needed to be made. And then, again, as I mentioned, all property taxes being deposited into the general fund first. So this is just kind of a quick graph. If you look at the 2026 adopted budget, it starts out with what our projected beginning fund balance was, which was about 13.4 million, what the adopted revenue was, which was 76.7 million, expenditures of 84.9, which meant that we had ultimately an ending fund balance of 5,360,000. That's where that $8.1 million reduction came from. And if we wanted to have a 12% reserve, we would need $10.1 million, which meant we would be short by $4.8 million of having the reserves that we needed. So then we did amendments of, for example, the beginning fund balance. It went down by 1.475. The biggest change there is that affordable housing money. We moved it out of the general fund. We moved it into another fund. So it came out of that beginning fund balance. We've made 16.2 million of revenue adjustments. Again, the biggest piece of that is the revenue where we're now counting all the property tax in the general fund. And then the expenditures of 11,520, where we're transferring that money to streets and parks is that piece. And our ending fund balance then grew by $6.2 million. So the proposed column shows you that revenues are 95.9, almost 96 million, and we're just over 96.4 million in expenditures. And the reason that we are off about $400,000 between revenues and expense is we've also got the 3/10 sales tax in here, and that was spending down some reserves that were one-time, that will, that will use up for the most part in 2026.
Yes, question. Thank you. So when I look at the expenditures that were amendments that were made, the 11,520 into streets and parks, that was after it was, the money goes into general fund, and then it comes out and goes directly to those departments. Is that correct?
Correct. The 11,520 is part of that, and I'll kind of go through the numbers so you can, you can see some of the highlights of what's changed there. Okay? But as you can see, then, our reserve ending balance would be 11,569,189. A 12% reserve would be 11,570, so we're off $1,661. And this would be what I would, I would commonly characterize as budget dust. Okay?
I'll make a note of that right here, budget.
Okay. It's close enough that I believe those numbers are pretty accurate on $95 million or $96 million. Any questions? Okay. So then, this slide really then goes through that 16.2 million dollar change in revenue. And as you look, it kind of talks about, for the most part, the three major, the three-legged stool in the general fund. Property tax, sales tax, utility tax. Property tax, we have a projected $28.3 million. This is, again, up $19.2 million from the 9.1 that was originally in the budget. And again, that's the transfer where we put all the property tax in the general fund, and then we, we transfer the money to streets and parks. Okay? There's also an additional $6 million in there that's proposed for property tax at this point. For utility tax, we are seeing an increase of about $1.4 million, and that has to do with the fact that we are very much seeing our utility collections in 2025 be much stronger than we expected. One of the largest ones is in the electrical utility. We have, there's a 6% utility tax on that. And the, ultimately, the electric company, you know, Pacific Power, has probably raised their rates significantly. And that has caused then the tax on that to be, to be higher than we expected.
So I want people to understand we are not increasing that tax. It is going up because your utility costs are going up.
Exactly. Yep. Yeah, the council did not vote to change that utility tax at all. The challenge, though, is, is as we talked about, sales tax, we are seeing about a $2.2 million reduction. We budgeted 31.6 million for 2026, and that number in 2026 is really going to probably be around 29.4. And, you know, if I had to worry about that, and I do, because that's why I don't have much hair left, ultimately, it could probably go lower than that, hopefully not a great deal lower, but we're hoping that that's a pretty good estimate for now.
Oh, it's just, I think you answered my question. It's the estimate. Yeah.
Okay. And then ultimately, there was about $800,000, $800,000 of a bunch of other types of revenues, like investment earnings and things like that that go up and down. Not great, but just a little bit from what was originally projected. So if you look at that top box on the left, the adopted budget for revenues was 76,779,080. We added 16.2 million in revenue. That gets us to the 95,983, which is the box on the right. Okay?
I actually do have a question. On the sales tax. So it's projected at 29.4. You and I have talked about this, that we're not, you know, the previous years of projecting, was it too aggressive? So this is more conservative approach on, on that measurement, right? So, and even, so with the projected loss this year, it's from the projection of last year's projection for this year's sales tax, which was probably over what we should have probably been projecting for sales tax anyways.
Yes, I would agree with that. Yep.
Okay. So it might actually be closer to where, if we actually projected at a normal rate, it might have actually been closer to where we should have been anyways.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, it's, it's interesting as you look at the month-by-month collections of sales tax and you compare it to the prior years. We started seeing the reduction in July of 2024 from the prior year collections in '23. So July '24 to July '23, we started seeing that '23s was bigger than '24s. So we saw all six months, I think, in the last, the last six months of '24, were lower than the last six months' collections in '23. Then in the first six months of '25, again, the same thing. We saw, we saw the collections were less than the prior year of the first six months of '24. We did, though, however, in July and August, we started seeing that July and August of '25 were greater than what July and August in '24 was. So we were starting to feel pretty good. And I said "starting" because one of the challenges was we looked at September's, and September's collections are lower than September of '24. So we're keeping an eye on them. We're watching the different areas of where, you know, we're struggling. Hopefully, you know, interest rates play, I think, a part in this. People refinance, people get, you know, home equity loans to do things on their home. They next, the next thing you know, they're paying sales tax because they're buying, you know, they're having their home remodeled or something like that. Those are the kinds of things that I think would really help us, and we're keeping a real close eye on those kinds of things.
How does the, so the states just enacted a bunch of new sales taxes on basically everything? And, yeah, and they, a lot of those just went into effect October 1st. Do we know how that's going to affect our revenue projection and that? Because, again, they're taxing on things now, and sales tax that they never have collected sales tax on.
Right. Yeah, you're, you know, you're absolutely right. One of the challenges is, is if you remember, you know, our 8.3 sales tax, 6.5 of that goes to the state. So they're getting the lion's share of that. So our little, you know, you know, 1.8%, and even all of that, we don't get all of it because some of it goes to the, to the county. That is really going to be, it's going to go up probably, but we're not sure exactly what it is. What I'm concerned about is those things that they put taxes on. Now, we also have to pay as a city of Yakima, so our expenses are going to go up as well. So at this point, we haven't determined to put either one of those in the budget at this point because we just really don't know what the number is. Does that make sense?
Just like to acknowledge on the record, the council on Roy just came in. Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. So that's the revenue picture for the general fund. And we've done the exact same thing for the expenditures. It started at 84.9 million. The bottom right box is the 96.4. It's an 11.5 million dollar change. Again, transfers of about 13.2 million, and we've talked about what that is. That's where we've put the property tax into the general fund. This is now giving the money out. We've seen salaries and benefits go up about 345,000. The, the big changes there have been, the state actually did reduce the retirement rate contributions for the employees, for some of them. Not for police and fire, not for the left retirees. And then, but we did have to adjust overtime for police and fire from what was put in the budget. So that's about 345,000. Services and charges went up about 1.89 million. Again, contract adjustments, inflation that we have, and then some utility increases. An example of this is in our IT department. We didn't budget for our annual Microsoft 365 contract. That's about $365,000 a year. So it wasn't in there originally, so we had to put that in there. Or we wouldn't have Microsoft and Excel or any, any of the products. And then we also had targeted budget reductions that we've worked on in prior with the, with the council of about $3 million. Those are kind of the highlights of what makes up that 11.5 million dollars. Okay? One of the things that, that this is really important to show is where we look going forward and where we were when we, you know, a couple of years in actuals. And you'll see the black line is our reserve policy. In '23, that number was higher than it was all the way to '29, and that's because our reserve policy was 16.7%. We changed that down to 12% at the end of '24, and you can see that it's got a steady growth built in in terms of where that 12% would be. The red is what we project our ending fund balance for. '23, '24 are actuals. Everything else is an estimate. But '25, we expect the reserve to be just barely higher than the 12%. Again, we're right on in '26. That's that, that $1,661 of budget dust that we talked about. And then '27, '28, and '29 is our forecast, where we forecast some revenues and expenditures and the growth. We will be just below that if we forecasted that out all the way to 2029. That's part of the budget process. To have that as our projection that we have to deal with is a pretty good place to start. So some of the adjustments that the council's making is making, going to make it easier in those future years to be able to close the budget gaps. We're not talking about $9 million or any number close to that based on projections. Now, revenues can change. You know, sales tax can go down even further, or something else can, can adjust. But right now, those numbers look pretty solid in terms of where we need to be.
That's the good news.
Yeah, that's, you know, a lot better than it's ever looked.
Yep. Yeah, this doesn't look like the plane kind of nose diving in the ground. So. There is some things, though, that I want to make sure that council understands. This isn't 100% of everything, but it's the bigger numbers. These are some of the things that are not in the 2026 budget. And just right up front, it's, for the most part, a lot of this is equipment, police and fire. We currently in the police department, we have a $200,000 equipment replacement. That really needs to be at least an additional $750,000. And we just didn't have the additional resources to put in there. Fire, the same way, we have $250,000, and it really needs to be $600,000. It's, it's so that, you know, especially with fire, there's, they've got big fire trucks and the equipment, that really expensive equipment. We really need to make sure that we're not looking for manna from heaven to fall out of the sky from the federal government or the state government when it's time to replace one of those big pieces of equipment. We need to start setting money aside that, basically, the day we buy it, so that by the time it's worn out, we have money set aside to replace it. So that's part of that replacement cycle that we're still going to have to work on a little bit. But this is, this is really kind of a list of things that we want to work on going forward. The snow and ice removal, we have $250,000 in the 2026 budget. But what we'd like to do is also put a reserve aside of an additional $250,000. So if we have a really heavy snow and ice season, like hopefully we have this year because we know we need the water, that if we have to do a lot more cleaning of streets and things, we have an additional $250,000 to tap into. And in the years that we don't need to use it, we can re- dollars to tap into. And in the years that we don't need to use it, we can refill that bucket if we've underspent that first two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Okay? We've also put in here seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for bond payment, and this is for, really for facilities upgrades. This is looking at this building, the Bank of America building. It's not the money that, you know, the consultant said you needed for the Bank of America building, but it's something to be able to use the building and get it being used. And the way we did this was we looked at, for about every million dollars that you need, if you borrowed that money, if you bonded for it, it costs you about seventy-five thousand dollars a year in a bond payment. So if you needed ten million dollars, for example, you would need a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar revenue stream to be able to pay that bond back over the years. So we put that in there for now. It's something that we want to continue to look at going forward. We also looked at needing to increase our training for our police department. So there's an additional hundred thousand there. And then the last two are in IT. One is a firewall replacement for seventy-five thousand. And then the other one, John called me, and I want to make sure I say this right. This is for, where did I write it? This is for the IT server replacement. It's not just the server, it's our actual backup solution for all of our system for the city. So we want to make sure, that's two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. A lot of these things that are on here, it works really well that if reserves actually came in a little stronger, you know, we had a little more revenue, we spent, underspent our budget, and our reserves were a little higher than twelve percent, these would be the kinds of things that would be, extra reserves could help fill some of those gaps going forward.
Got it, and some budget dust.
And, yeah, exactly. With budget dust. So then also, one of the things that we had looked at was proposed expense reductions. Three million dollars with police, a million seven fifty with fire, and a million four in parks. This is the information that we received from the police. The proposed reductions would be twelve police officer positions, one police sergeant, four community services officers, an analyst, supervisor, one analyst, and then reductions, we'd do a little bit of horse trading with some radio funds that we set aside to help keep a CSO officer in those funds, and then about a fifty-thousand-dollar reduction for the Humane Society contract.
So, at this point, if I may, I'd like to have Chief Boyle come up, if you could do that. Thank you, chief, for being here this evening. So the first thing I want to do is thank you for the presentation to the community last night, and I know that you're doing some others. I think it's very well-received and really helps people understand the level of service that we provide here in the city of Yakima through our police department. You all did a great job.
Oh, well, thank you, and thanks to my staff for putting that together and help get the information together. So, thank you.
So I just have one question, and that is, what we're talking about in this, really, how do you see this would affect services to the communities, specific kinds of services to the community? How would it change?
Well, as a, as a organization, we'd have to decide on which priorities, strategic priorities we're gonna address as far as the department patrol. Police officers responding to immediate nine-one-one calls will be our number-one thing that we have to do every day. And then as we analyze how many officers we have, if with the thirteen reductions, we would have to identify what our strategic priorities would be and what are the basic needs of the city. That's kind of what we're having these community forums. What do people want to see as far as service from us, and how can we better serve them within the community? So at this time, it's hard for me to stand up here and say, these are the specific units that may or may not be impacted, because I think we have to look at where we, as a city, most need to devote our resources. So I think that's something that we would do as a community, or I'm sorry, as a command staff, and then we'd, again, communicate with our city manager and assistant city manager, and obviously put something forth to you at the beginning of the year so that we could identify where the staff would be allocated.
I appreciate that. And I'd like for people to hear what you have to present that I heard last night, so that be better informed. What other presentations you have scheduled?
We have one scheduled tomorrow night at the Washington Fruit Center.
At seven?
That's six o'clock.
Oh, six, okay.
And then.
Thank you.
How many people came last night?
There were about twenty-four last night, and I think today, in the two presentations, about eighty people were there.
Yeah, that's good.
Chief, I appreciate this being, you know, in your wheelhouse of determining how, what's best to serve the community and those aspects. And so I appreciate how you've responded to that. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah. And for the TV audience, Washington Fruit Center tomorrow night at six o'clock is your opportunity. Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
I have a question. For Mr. Warner, sorry. You're good, chief. If we did the one percent sales tax, what would the projection be, revenue brought in?
Yeah, the tenth of a cent.
Yeah.
Yeah. The tenth of a cent has always been a projection of about two-point-seven million dollars.
And that would go directly to police?
Yeah, it has to be used for public safety, and I believe it could be used for police, it could be used for indigent defense. There's a few other areas, but for the most part, that's where it's gotta be. It cannot be used for, we call fire public safety. It would not allow for fire.
So if we did that, it could essentially save most of this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. So fire.
Yeah, before we get into the.
Turn your light off.
I turned it off.
Yep, turn your mic off.
I'm back, okay. We learned last night, we received notification that Union Gap has decided not to renew our fire protection agreement, that we've been partnering with them for a number of years. I just wanted to make sure you know, our priority is to provide high-level fire protection service to all of the residents and businesses of the city of Yakima. And agreements that we worked on together have to be mutually beneficial and work for the city. We heard that direction from the council. I also know that our residents here in Yakima expect a high level of service and a good fire rating, which is also our priority here for our businesses and our residents, that they get to keep their insurance rates down. So we will focus on that here in the city. I'm sure you have questions. I don't know, and Chief is here, he might be able to answer if you do have questions. But I just wanted to give you that update.
I just have a comment. I just learned about this today, too. And my comment is, if I were honestly a business owner or resident of the city of Union Gap, I would be concerned because we provide services that they don't have in Union Gap. And if we're not there to provide that service, particularly if you're a large business, it's going to potentially be very costly to you. And just the fact that they won't have us, they're going, reaching further out, my understanding is to East Valley, that is going to certainly increase the response time, which is also going to increase fire insurance to residents and businesses. So for them, I am concerned.
Yeah, I found out about this last night after their council meeting. And, you know, one of the thoughts I was thinking about was going, huh, interesting. You know, a lot of their sales tax revenue and businesses that they bring in rely upon the city of Yakima's fire rating, not their own, but the city of Yakima's fire rating, to actually produce and do the commercial work that they have with the mall and all of the things that are going on in that area. And I don't think that council necessarily thought that all the way through, to be honest with you. And, you know, I think it's a missed opportunity, and, you know, we're just gonna keep on trucking over here and keep doing what we need to do. And so, yeah.
Thank you, Chief Markham, and your crew for all that you do. We appreciate that. Any other comments, counsel? Okay.
So I wanted to pause specifically about that because that will require another adjustment for the budget from what was here, because we did have that agreement in this budget. So we'll have to amend that. But ultimately, the proposed reductions for fire was the one-point-seven-five million. And ultimately, I guess the main thing that I want to say is, is it's our goal to prioritize the retention of the employees, whether it's the employees that were servicing Union Gap, or they were, you know, it's at the proposed closing of Station Ninety-two. One of the challenges that we know we have is we have a large overtime. Part of that is because we don't really have a relief factor built into any of our, into any of our shifts. And we believe that we can look at reprioritizing and retaining a lot of those employees, if not all of them, to be able to cover and help offset some of that overtime. We're always gonna have overtime because we will never have everybody on the same shift that we need exactly where there's people that are taking time off. But ultimately, this could help us by reprioritizing those employees. And I think we will work very diligently with Vicky and Chief to be able to make sure that we can do that very thing.
Appreciate that.
And then the other proposed reduction was in parks of about one-point-four million dollars. And ultimately, it was, and I want to mention what the note that I have at the bottom. This removes the general fund contribution from these programs. It doesn't mean that these programs necessarily have to close. It just means that the general fund will not be able to provide funding for these. There may be other opportunities, and I know the city will look at every option for these. The one that's probably harder to articulate is the sixteen percent reduction in park maintenance. You know, what does that mean specifically? It may mean less mowing, less watering. It may mean the bathrooms aren't open on a normal basis for the parks, those types of things. It just is gonna be kind of a, it's gonna take, it's gonna be a new normal. We're gonna have to adjust our service levels for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So that was all the general fund. And again, you know, when you look at it, general fund's about a ninety-six-million-dollar budget. But when you look at this, we actually have a total budget with the general fund of three-hundred-and-twenty-six million. So I'd be amiss not to at least discuss some of those things, even though, again, most of that is money in. It comes in specifically for a specific function. So if you look at this one, we are seeing that beginning fund balance as a whole would go up about twelve-point-six million from what we projected. Revenue's up thirty-seven million, expenditure's up forty. And if you look at that, then the revenues, we've talked about the general fund already, that was sixteen-point-two million. Grants are up about fifteen million dollars, and almost all of these grants are capital improvements, most of them in the street program. Transfers of about one-point-eight million dollars, this is because we're taking the lodging tax money into one fund and then moving it out. And then licenses, permits, and charges, this is an additional one-point-three million dollars in revenue. And this is ultimately just seeing increasing permit activity and other miscellaneous fee adjustments. So that kind of is some highlights to that thirty-seven million. On the expenditure side of a forty-million-dollar increase, again, general fund was eleven-and-a-half million, we've talked about. Lodging tax is about one-point-eight million on the expense side where it goes out. Construction is about twenty-two-point-four million dollars. So obviously, we're gonna get fifteen million more in revenue. We're gonna spend about twenty-two-point-four. That means we probably already have some grants that we collected in twenty-five that will be spent in twenty-six. And then about one-point-eight million dollars in services and charges. And a lot of this is inflation and negotiated contracts that were greater than originally were budgeted. So that's the forty million in bigger numbers. The next steps, then, will be that council will have, we have scheduled two public hearings, one for November twelfth and one for November eighteenth to go over the budget, to basically, we'll probably go back through similar slides and then allow public comment to take place. We also, on November twelfth, have a public hearing related to the ad valorem or the property tax. And this is the look at the one percent growth that council can approve each year without a vote of the people. And then we've scheduled the budget to be adopted on December second. That's our goal, to be able to have that completed. And questions or any?
I'd just like to make a comment. So we have spent probably the better part of this last year as the council and as staff, whether new city manager, whether new financial director, and many other people, all the department heads involved in this process. So it's been very complicated. On top of that, I just think there are things that have happened that needed to happen for transparency, for staff, for the council, and for the public. And doing things like taking monies all into one place where they should go first to be accountable before they go out to the departments, or creating a fund for LTAC, which comes in as a whole, and it's accountable where it goes, those kinds of things. I know they're huge shifts for your department, and I just appreciate that you are working on that.
Well, thank you. I have to say, I have some great employees. They do a really good job. But I also have to thank, you know, the senior management and the staff, all the staff at the city, and, you know, and the council, because the direction that you provide us is great. But I will tell you, I am so glad to be able to work with Vicky every day. She's great. She gives us great direction, and that helps us in a great way to get our jobs done. So, thank you.
I want to also just tell you that, I think for the, maybe the first time since I've been on council, this has been one of the better, like, our, these presentations that you've been giving have been just freaking spot-on, yeah, on our budget and where we've been, and very transparent to the community, but also just a huge difference from where we were and what we've been seeing in the past. So, thank you.
Absolutely. So we want to commend you, and then we want to commend our city manager, Vicky Baker, for hiring you. And I want to commend the council for hiring Vicky Baker.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is an update on indigent defense caseload standards. And Cynthia Martinez, our senior assistant city attorney, is gonna present.
Good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon.
Okay, as the title suggests, this is an update from a presentation that was made last year concerning indigent defense. So last year, I, well, I guess I'll start at the beginning of my presentation. So in twenty-fifteen, the Washington Supreme Court, for the first time, adopted standards for indigent defense. And those standards limited the amount of cases that defense attorneys or indigent defense attorneys could handle in a year's period. At that time, the standard was set at four-hundred cases a year for municipal, I'm gonna say municipal court, but it's actually courts of limited jurisdiction, which includes municipal courts, or the courts that we're concerned about because you're funding that court. So in, at some point, in, I believe it was in twenty-twenty-three, the Washington Supreme Court asked the Washington State Bar Association to look at those standards to see if any adjustments needed to be made. That exercise resulted in the Washington State Bar Association adopting new standards. Now, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mainly talk about our level of courts, because the standards have changed for every, all levels of courts. But of course, we're just concerned about the, those in municipal court. So the Washington State Bar Association did it, as I stated last year, they adopted a standard that reduced the number of cases that an indigent defense attorney can handle in a year from four-hundred to a hundred-and-twenty. And their policy provided three years to implement that change. They also had requirements for social worker staffing and paralegal staffing. So for so many, I think it was for each ten attorneys, you were supposed to also have a social worker on staff and a paralegal. There was also mandatory case waiting, which was actually quite complex. They recommended those standards to the Washington Supreme Court, and the Washington Supreme Court, they. Court, they drafted a rule that actually implemented those standards. And they asked everybody to comment on that proposed rule, they had two hearings regarding that proposed rule, and the city of Yakima did make a comment, and as well as others in our area. So, finally, on June 9th, the Washington Supreme Court did adopt a rule, and it's been codified in our new rulebook that we get every year. So they did adopt the 120-case standard, 120-case limit, but they have allowed for a 10-year implementation as opposed to a three-year. They did not adopt the social worker and paralegal staffing, so that's, you know, that is a relief, for the budget, anyway, that's a relief. And they also did not adopt the mandatory case weighting. But again, they adopted the 120-case limit for an attorney. Now, you might think, oh, well, then we can just kick the can down the road, we've got 10 years to think about whether, how we're going to implement this, but actually, that's not the case. The rule actually prescribes that we are to make a reduction every year over the 10 years. And the reduction is, we're supposed to take the difference between 400 and 120, which is 280 cases, and we're supposed to reduce, take 10% of the 280 every year for the next 10 years. So that is going to result in a, in our reduction of filings starting next year. So you have funded 9.35 attorneys to handle indigent defense in the city of Yakima. That affords us 3,740 cases, that's how many cases that we would have handled this year, and that's what we're striving for. It's a balance. We monitor the caseload every day so that we can meet those totals and not go over budget. Now, in 2026, we're looking at a reduction, if everything remains the same as far as staffing, we would be looking at 262 less cases that could be filed, or a total of 3,478. And then, in 2027, you're looking at a reduction of 523 cases, or 3,216. And I'm concentrating here on the, this presentation is concentrating just on your, on the budget that you're, the immediate budget that you're considering at this time. Yes?
How has the cases gone up over the previous three years from before 2025? Have we always stayed around 3,700, or has it been?
That is our limit. You know, sometimes we're a little, sometimes, you know, we strive to be under that limit so that we make sure we're not going over budget. There have been some years when we have gone slightly over, but of course, this year, we're very cognizant of the budget concerns, budget constraints, and we are really, we're endeavoring to stay within that number. I will say that the cases coming in the door are going up. Yeah, we have, we do get a lot of cases.
So how do we make that adjustment to being a lot of cases coming in the door and reduce number that are actually going to court?
Well, we file less cases, we are pickier about which cases that we choose to file.
So you just plea deal out these other cases?
No, they're never filed.
Still never filed.
They're declined.
They're just on their own.
So they're just put back out?
They're just declined?
Yeah.
It's called declined.
That's where you get these situations, where somebody steals a car and nobody ever holds them accountable, or somebody assaults somebody and they never get held accountable because it's too expensive to prosecute. That's a problem that we need to address, and this doesn't do it at all. One of the things I'm kind of curious about, though, you make it sound like the courts are putting together these regulations. I thought that our state government, the Congress, is responsible for that kind of stuff. How is it that we've got the judges mandating what we do?
Well, the judges, the Supreme Court are, they're the ones that decide on the court rules. And in order to be a licensed attorney in the state of Washington, you need to comply with the court rules. So, I mean, you know, we've all gone through a lot of effort to get, to become a licensed attorney, and so we don't want to risk that license. So each indigent defense attorney is required to certify that they have not exceeded the maximum number of cases that they can handle in a year on a quarterly basis. They file that affidavit with the court on a quarterly basis.
To answer your question, Rick, too, the legislature gave away that ability in an RCW to the Supreme Court.
The other thing I'm wondering about, started about two years ago, that the state started funding attorneys to handle unlawful retainers. And I personally have had a case where we went to court six times, and then the judge never made a decision, he just kept deferring it. But the argument I'm hearing is that the state does not intend to fund these attorneys indefinitely, they plan to turn it over to the cities or the courts, turn it over to us to pay for those attorneys as well.
The civil attorneys? Well, I haven't specifically heard about that movement or effort.
I don't know if it's going to happen or not, but that's the discussion that is being commonly made, is, you know, when you go to an unlawful retainer, then you, the tenant gets a free attorney for as long as they want, and then, you know, the landlord, of course, has to pay for their attorney, but that's the argument I've been hearing, is that the state doesn't intend to do that long-term, they want to throw it in the laps of the cities or the counties. So how would that affect things, or are you only talking about criminal cases?
That is beyond, that is beyond my presentation here today.
It is not indigent defense.
Right, I'm talking about indigent defense attorneys. And so, yes, if that would be the case, that would definitely be something I'm sure that council and our city manager would be very concerned about.
When you talk about this limit, are we just talking about criminal cases?
We are.
Criminal and civil?
We're only talking about criminal cases and indigent defense cases, so those people that can't afford to hire their own attorney.
So what was the reasoning behind, was 120 an arbitrary number, or how did they come to that?
Well, they, they conducted a survey, and they asked defense attorneys how long they were needed to prepare for a case, and, you know, the calculations that resulted, that were a result of the survey led to the 120.
So it's a case of asking who's going to get the income?
How many, how many cases right now do we turn down in the, that we don't?
I mean, we probably have declined, you know, every year, we probably decline 1,000 to 1,500 cases.
Okay, so it'll be in addition to that with the reduction. The other question I had is, on the indigent side of things, is there a way to audit the ability of who can actually afford the indigent defense? So I've heard other cities do this, and counties do this across the state, and what they're finding is, oh, actually, a lot of these people could actually afford their own defense attorney, they didn't need to use indigent defense, and so we're having these caseloads drop, and then, anyways, my thought is right now is like, how do we audit that currently from that standpoint, so that we know that if we're going to fund this, that we're actually funding folks that actually can't afford it?
Not declining people who can't afford it, but putting people in who can, and they're saying that they're indigent, so.
Well, the judge is the one that decides whether somebody qualifies for an indigent defense attorney. They are very limited on the type of questions or the amount of inquiry that they can make on the record. That's not to say that they, you know, other jurisdictions, you know, they have defendants fill out a form, and then they have a staff person that reviews the form ahead of time, so, I mean, those are questions really for the court, you know, I can't answer for them, but there may be some, you know, there may be some changes that could be made there that-
I'd be interested-
That could save the money, could save the city money, excuse me.
I'd be interested to know that process, because I've talked to other cities also struggling with this issue, and as they started to dig in and audit some of those things, they went, holy cow, there's a huge discrepancy on some of these. And so being able to actually, you know, and I'm not saying we are having that issue or not, but I would like to know what the process is, if there is a process, anyways.
If you, if an individual receives any sort of aid from the government, they automatically do qualify for an indigent defense attorney, so, you know, there's, it's hard to say, it's hard to say. We probably, 10% of our cases hire a private attorney, and the rest are indigent defense. So it's 90% of our cases.
That's an astronomical number.
So is there, is there 10% of that? I mean, 10% of that would be, you know, probably a $200,000 saving. So anyway, those are questions really for the court to-
Well, and I-
I'm sorry, how does the court determine what they ask? Do they ask a list of assets, for example?
Well, they, you know, what, I really should let them answer. I, you know, I think at this point, there's limited inquiry, just because, again, many people, many people are on public assistance, or even if you receive food stamps, then you automatically qualify for indigent defense.
Even a tax return would, I mean, would show.
How do they verify that they're on government assistance?
Orally.
I think that probably at this point, that we should leave, that we could request-
There's a lot to this issue that we don't have time for tonight.
So we would probably like to direct the city manager to, at some study session in the future, bring this back to us, maybe have the judges present.
It'd be very helpful.
Maybe find some way to save some money.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so this graph, oops, but this graph, this graph actually shows the caseload breakdown, and it's just to show you how, you know, 500, if you see this darker block there right at the end, it says 523, that is, that represents our other category of cases, and in year 2027, that is about the number that we would have to reduce our caseload by. The types of cases that are included in our other cases are your camping cases, your drugs, fighting in public, disorderly conduct, vehicle metal, those types of cases are what's in that category. So, just to give you an idea of the impact of that reduction of 523 cases.
To not have the reduction, are we talking every, I mean, you're talking 10% reduction in cases every year for the next 10 years? Are you talking a 10% increase in a budget every, to keep the same amount of cases?
So we'd have to add 22 defense attorneys to keep at, by the end of the 10 years, to keep our current, our current charging number, get that out there, our current charging number, or charging ability. And so, you know, you're looking at maybe adding two attorneys a year, two defense attorneys a year.
Additional 22 on top of the nine?
9.35 that we have right now.
Thirty-some odd attorneys.
That will affect budgeting in current years or coming up years?
Yeah, it would triple, more than triple your current budget, which is 1.9 million.
So it's six, six million dollars.
And that's not just a one-year thing, because you're implementing it over 10 years.
Yes. Yes, again, I'm focused on, you know, this current budget cycle.
So Mr. Mason looks pretty kind of shell-shocked. Are we doing okay here?
Yes, Harry Mason.
Dun dun.
Any other questions for Ms. Martinez? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We know we were a tough audience tonight, so.
Appreciate the time.
We have no other categories tonight because it's a study session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn to our next regular city council meeting on October 21st at 5:30 PM here at City Hall.
A second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, and second by Councilwoman DCO, to adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, October 21st, 2025, 5:30 PM here at City Hall. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.